Good evening. My name is Gene Chan, Hearing Officer for San Francisco Public Works. Clinton Otwell is the clerk of this hearing. This hearing is being recorded via Zoom and will be available afterwards through a link on the San Francisco Public Works website, sfpublicworks.org. As this is a virtual hearing, there is no sign in sheet. So if you would like to receive information about the results of this hearing, please send an email to the email address listed on the hearing notice. This public hearing is being held to consider nine items. Order 203700 at 1975 through 2399 Market Street to consider removal of 21 street trees with replacement. Order number 203701 at 9429th Street to consider removal of one street tree without replacement. Order number 203702 at 900 Kearney Street to consider removal of one street tree without replacement at 900 Kearney Street. Order number 203703 at 115 Jordan Avenue to consider removal of one street tree with replacement. Order number 203704 at 439 Hill to consider removal of one street tree with replacement. Order number 203705 at 1506 Willett Street to consider removal of one street tree without replacement. Order number 203706 at 4840 Mission Street to consider removal of 11 street trees with replacement. Order number 203707 at 65 Ocean Avenue to consider removal of 12 street trees and two significant trees with replacement of eight street trees. Order number 203708, 12 different addresses in Supervisor District 2 to consider removal of 12 hazardous trees at 12 different addresses. My job as a hearing officer is to gather the facts for the hearing item, listen to your testimonies, and help our Director of Public Works make determination. I will not be making any decisions today. Instead, I will forward the findings from this hearing and make my recommendations to the Director. The Director will make the final determination. When the Director's determinations are made, the department will notify you of them if you have provided contact information. The hearing will proceed as follows for the nine cases. I will ask Public Works staff to speak first and present the case. Then I will allow the property owner or the applicant to speak. Then any member of the public who wants to speak. Then the department can speak to address any comments. Lastly, the property owner or applicant can speak if they have any rebuttals. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. The clerk will monitor the time for all speakers and will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining. If you are a party to this proceeding, I will call on you to speak. If you would like to use a visual in your presentation, please let me know before you speak. You will then have the standard three minutes to provide your comments. If you're a member of the public, please wait for me to call for public comments. Then use Zoom's Raise Your Hand feature to put yourself in the queue to speak. When it is your turn to speak, I will recognize you. If you would like to use visual materials, please let me know. Then you will have the standard three minutes to provide your comments. Comments and questions should be addressed to me and not to the department or the applicant. If you cannot finish your comments within a lot of time, you may submit written testimony to me by the end of this hearing. After all comments are completed, I will close the item. We will now begin the hearing. Order number 203700. May I have Public Works make its presentation?
Thank you. This is Chris Buck with San Francisco Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry. So it took me a couple of extra minutes to log in here this evening. So I'm going to begin screen sharing in a moment. I have a PDF presentation to share as part of this presentation. Hold on a moment. We'll get this to a full window view. And I just want to confirm that you can hear me okay?
Yes, Chris, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you very much. So let's go to full screen mode. So again, good evening. My name is Chris Buck, and I'll try to improve my lighting. But we're going to go through the individual trees that were approved as part of this application. And we will likely also be joined by a member of the Streetscape project team that can also talk a little bit more about the project and funding and some of the additional goals of the project. So this is a Streetscape project where there are going to be pedestrian improvements at various intersections. And when Public Works in general is looking at improvements to a roadway, our Bureau of Urban Forestry is tasked with assessing the condition of the trees along that corridor. So in this case, we're talking Market Street from approximately Octavia Boulevard to close to Castro. And so what we want to do is evaluate trees and look at trees that are in poor condition that really should be removed and replaced because we have an opportunity and the funding to plant replacement trees. So that was essentially our assignment here, supporting our folks with landscape architecture. So this is essentially a capital improvement project. And our inspection team preliminarily evaluated these trees in 2016 to look at which trees were in good condition, which trees were in poor or declining condition and should be replaced. And I will note that originally in 2016, we made a recommendation preliminarily to remove 30 trees. However, this year, when the project picked back up, we evaluated the trees and based on the climate emergency and really the need to retain as many mature trees as possible, we've reduced the proposed removals to 21 trees. So we'll be reviewing those 21 trees this evening. So the first tree is 1975 Market Street. It's adjacent to this property and refer to it as Tree One or Tree ID 248631. I won't be going through all of those details for each individual tree, but that ID is almost like that tree site's social security number. So we track that individual tree in our tree database. What we're showing here is the tree on the left has a lean, is in very poor condition. There's nothing we can do to bring this tree back to good health. So it's a tree that we would recommend be removed and replaced as part of the project. The next tree is also adjacent to 1975 Market Street. This one is Tree Five. This tree is also in very poor condition. It might look okay to the average passerby, but the tree has been there for a number of years and really hasn't grown much. And what you'll hear us talk about this evening is really the cultivar of London plane tree or platinus x hispanica are really not well suited to our fog and our cold climates. Our foggy cold summers are really confusing the species. Now, there are different cultivars that do much better. And so that's what we'll be talking about this evening. And I believe it's Columbia is the cultivar that would do better in this microclimate. But the Streetscape team will also provide that information as well. Here's another tree that we felt is in poor condition. It has a permanent lean. It is mature. But again, for a tree that's as old as it is, the tree hasn't grown a whole lot. It's still relatively small. The lean is a permanent lean. And believe it or not, if you are walking down the street and not paying attention, if you were to hit your head, this would actually be a liability for the city. So we need to establish trees and busy thoroughfares that are upright and not going to hit someone literally as they walk by. Also, consider those with vision impairments or challenges. They would feel with their stick and not sense anything there and could literally walk into that tree. So again, poor condition, poor structure, and a strong lean. This tree as well, very poor condition, very strong lean, an obvious candidate to remove and replace with a better cultivar that can better withstand the wind and the fog of this microclimate. As well as Tree Number Four, also adjacent to 2000 Market Street. Moving down the street a bit, adjacent to 2059 Market Street is this tree. You can see over access, this tree is completely going to the left, which is away from the wind. Nothing we can do to sort of stimulate or make this tree grow better in this current setting with this cultivar. So we're recommending removal and replacement. Same with this tree, also adjacent to 2059 Market Street, Tree Number Two. Very little canopy here, and it's really a shame because the tree has been there for a number of years and is not providing a lot of benefits to many folks. 2145 Market Street, this is another tree that we're recommending for removal. It's in very poor condition, poor structure, and is not going to thrive or get a whole lot bigger than this. And so we've identified it to be removed and replaced. 2175 Market Street, Tree Number Three is in foreground. It's difficult to see, but there's very little canopy that is growing from this tree. So again, recommending that one for removal. As well as Tree Number Four, adjacent to 2175 Market Street, this one's in severe decline. Here we have another tree, Tree Number Five, adjacent to 2175 Market Street. Very poor condition, really being hammered by the wind, as well as the tree behind it, Tree Number Six. Very poor condition. The tree is in severe decline and nothing we can do to revive this tree and make it thrive in this setting. This tree is much smaller, Tree Number Seven, at this address. Obviously, would be great to remove and replace this tree as well. Tree Number Eight is ID 14304, and again, very poor condition. There's signs of decline. The tree should have a healthy, full, lush, green canopy. And that's, I should say that with all these trees, they should look really green and lush in these images. And they obviously look anything but. And so that's a sign that the tree is in very poor condition. And it's not related to care, you know? I think sometimes we need to clarify. We're not saying the city's cared for the tree poorly. The tree is in poor condition because it's not the right cultivar for this microclimate. Tree Number Ten, adjacent to 2175 Market Street, also in very poor condition, very sparse canopy and poor structure. And adjacent to 2207 Market Street, Tree Number One, very poor condition structurally and in terms of overall health and vigor. And we just have a few more to go, but 2275 Market Street, Tree Number One, this tree is in very poor condition. And Tree Number Two, adjacent to 2355 Market Street, very, very poor condition. These two trees, adjacent to Whole Foods, I'd have to triple check, but I believe these trees were here prior to the construction of Whole Foods. But these trees are in very poor condition and should be removed and replaced with a better cultivar. So that's the end of our sort of tree by tree presentation. I do want to assure the public that we, I'm just really blasting through these images, but we spend quite a bit of time at each individual tree, also with other colleagues. So I've reviewed these myself with our inspector Stephen Keller and review these so that again, if there's a tree that we feel is borderline or can remain, is in relatively fair to good condition, then our, you know, our protocol is to retain relatively healthy trees so that they can contribute environmental benefits. But these are the trees that our team has identified as being in very poor condition. Would be great to remove and replace these trees with the cultivar, I believe it's Columbia, platinus acerifoler or platinus hispanica, the genetic, the scientific genus name was updated in the last few years. But the project team will confirm replacement species. And we believe the replacement trees will do much better. They're much better suited to the wind and the fog than the straight species that were planted prior. The project team can also talk about the funding that they have to plant the replacement trees. And I don't think I stayed on the slide long enough, but these are to be replaced with 36-inch box-sized trees. And the project team with Public Works will have the funding to water the trees once a week and get them established over a three-year period. Will also make sure that they're adequately protected so that they're not vandalized by pedestrians. But with that, that's the overview of this particular project. We could see if there's anyone from the team who's on the call that could be patched in. That would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Who from Public Works wants to add?
Hi, this is Michelle Wu. Can you hear me? I'm with the Streetscape Project Team. Can you all hear me and see my slides?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So thank you to Hearing Officer. Thank you to everyone for this opportunity to present tonight on our Upper Market Corridor Safety Improvement Project. Thank you to Chris for the overview of the tree assessment. I am smiling and stalling right now because the machine is not seemingly moving to my next slide. But I will try my best to click through and hopefully you guys are following along. I appreciate the chance to share with everyone a project overview. Our, our project is a pedestrian improvement project. It does include corner bobouts, boarding island, thumbnail island improvements, traffic signal improvement, landscaping improvement, uplighting in the median island. There will also be included roadway striping and marking improvements, as you can see on the slide here. Improved green bike lanes and buffer zones, through lane, turn lane guidances for the bicycles as well as for vehicles. And we're going to keep a lot of the painted safety zones that we have out there. This particular slide, I wanted to give thank you to our landscape architect, Keanu Keoy, for putting together this information, which is basically trying to show the magnitude of the trees that were reviewed by Buff and our landscape team. All the yellow dots that you see are all the existing trees that were reviewed by our city team. And these are all the trees that are going to have been assessed to be in good condition and allowed to remain. And a few of these, as you see, have been assessed as being in poor condition and need removal. And we have found a few locations where we can add a couple of trees as well. So in summary, existing trees to remain are at a count of 231 along our project alignment. And every tree has been evaluated and assessed. There have been found, determined to be 21 London planes are in, are in poor condition. So the project is proposing replacement of these trees that are in poor condition. And an additional four of these London planes will be added as well along the corridor. The project's also proposing the planting of 12 additional shoe string acacia trees along the Guerrero Island, just off Market. So in terms of overview, these, this is showing basically all the trees that we are planting. And to highlight what Chris shared, yes, included in our contract is a three-year, long-term plant establishment period that has been funded. And the contractor will be responsible for maintenance and review of these locations to ensure that the trees are doing well. We're, we're always looking for room for improvement in terms of enforcement, but we will work closely with our construction management team to basically continue monitoring these trees during that three-year period to try to make sure that we basically will be keeping them thriving and keeping them nurtured during that establishment period. So that concludes my presentation. Just wanted to thank everyone for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, is there any member of the public who wants to speak?
Okay, we have two people that want to speak. The first one is going to be John Nutley, and we'll go ahead. Go ahead, John.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, John.
Okay. Order number is 203700, 1975 to 2399 Market Street. My name is John Altman. I'm the co-chair of the San Francisco Tree Campaign. 1969, anyway, you're planning on removing 21 trees. 2175 Market Street, the property owner destroyed those trees during construction of the property was finished in 2015. Eight are being removed in one empty plot. Request a fine to the property owner for lack taking care of the trees. 2001 Market Street, the property owner destroyed those, those trees during construction and drought when the building was finished in 2014 and two trees are planted, are planned to be planted and removed. 1844 Market Street, that property owner destroyed its tree that has an empty basin. And that building was completed in 2015. Requesting that the property owners of 2000, 2175, 2001, and 1844 Market Street pay their, their neglect, pay for the neglecting it in the proper maintaining of the trees in front of the properties during and after construction. 2355 Market Street is outside the Market Octavia area plan. Maps, do not, the maps show that it's not within 250 feet from the funding that stated in plan. So that one should be removed. The grates to be removed for the trees are located at 1975, 2003 Market Street. At the time of the removal notice in July and August of 2020, for the tree planting sites between Octavia and Noe Street, multiple empty plots between 250 feet of Market Street were empty. Mark and Octavia Plan states, the Market Street is a priority street for planting. I request the Hearing Officer and DPW and bar staff to expedite their planting. Communities looks forward to these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the next speaker?
Gene, before we move on to the next speaker, I just want to, could we reiterate that the questions for the hearing will come up using the raise hand feature and the Q and A is for technical issues related to scheduling or otherwise. Okay?
Sure.
So the next guest, we have John Goldsmith, who's raised his hand. John has to become a temporary panelist because he's using an older version of Zoom. So we are going to, where did you go? Just promoted him to panelist. John. We're waiting for John. Okay, we will go. We'll go to Monica. Go ahead, Monica.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you for organizing this. I'm here on behalf of Order 203708 for a dead tree located at 1885 Vallejo Street in San Francisco. I am the property owner of 1883 Vallejo Street, so within the same Victorian building that was built in 1901. There are currently four trees right in front of the property. One is severely dead. And my concern is that, that because it is completely dead, that it will cause some harm for all of the falling branches for any pedestrians walking by. I conclude my statement.
Thanks, Monica. Just to kind of reiterate, we're on Order Number 203700. Right now, I like to stay in that order. So if there are, are there any other comments related to this item? See, two hands from Josh and Lance.
We're going to allow Lance to go ahead. Lance Karnes, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I, in Chris's introduction, he mentioned there were at least two trees that were of a hazard to somebody who was sight impaired. And I'm wondering why you didn't tag those as hazard trees and get rid of them immediately. According to the records, these trees have been posted since July 24th, three months ago. Hazard trees out there that could damage a sight impaired person should have been gotten rid of immediately for 15 days. Can you comment on that, please?
Chris, can you provide a little bit of feedback on that?
Sure. The sidewalk's very wide there, so it's, it's a potential hazard. So I would say it's a potential hazard, but was just noting that the issue with the lean is not one of aesthetics. It's one of potential public safety concerns. So it's a good, it's a good point. But we really have a pretty high threshold for what we consider an outright hazard that needs to be removed right away. And because it's a pretty wide sidewalk, and it's a little bit of a gradual lean, it's not, it's not as problematic as other cases that we've seen like that. But it's noted, and that was the thinking on that one.
Thanks, Chris.
So we also have John Goldsmith, who was, had raised his hand, and we're here to promote him to panelist. John, if you're on there, you can go ahead and go.
Thank you very much. I'm grateful for this meeting, and I am glad about the discussion about the London plane trees on Market Street. I'm glad that there are better cultivars out there, but I don't think they're all that attractive generally for Market Street. I would like to see more ornamental trees, deciduous trees, jacarandas and magnolias, for example. I do like that the plane trees are habitat for swallow-tailed butterflies. And lastly, I am working in earnest with neighbors and property owners hoping to protect the only green belt in the muni system on the 2400 Market Street block. We submitted two street park applications to Public Works in March of 2018, and nothing's happened from the city agency perspective. But the trees are growing, and we want to protect and preserve our beautiful trees. They're pollinators, they're bird habitat, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, and I think we still have one hand up. One second. I believe we have Josh. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Just a quick point of order that I'm not aware of any city, city rule or regulation that allows for rebuttal at these departmental level hearings, which is contrasted, say, for instance, to the rules of the Board of Appeals where that's specifically spelled out. And I only raised that for two reasons. The first is that I've been to several of these departmental level hearings now where the applicant is The first is that I've been to several of these departmental level hearings now where the applicant is been, has been given way more than the three minute time period, which that does actually violate city regulations. And then the, the second reason is that, you know, at the Board of Appeals, for instance, the parties are aware of one another, we're aware of the adversarial but controlled environment. But at these departmental level hearings where rebuttal is for some reason allowed, I've had this really lousy experience of being personally attacked by the applicant for making a public comment. And one hearing officer actually ended up apologizing to me for allowing this to happen. So I'd really like for these hearings to follow the same rules virtually as, as they do at City Hall. Following up on Mr. Nolte's point, I think he was making the point that there are a number of trees in the vicinity that were required or possibly required as part of the developer agreement to be planted. And so if that is indeed what he was referring to, I would, I would second on that about the enforcement of those developer agreements to make sure that those are being followed and not just that the trees are planted and then left to their own devices. In terms of the replacement species, my question for the department would just be what consideration in selecting those has been given to the fact that, yeah, this is a wind tunnel? And we need to plant trees that can sustain that type of environment? I do appreciate knowing that there's going to be 36 inch boxes going in. I think that's going to go a long way in terms of the trees being able to establish, and certainly smaller trees would have a harder time with the wind and the human vandalizing factor. Two questions. When will the trees be planted? If there's a timeline for that, and maybe Michelle knows that as the project manager. And then what about if the trees are in fact vandalized? Because this is something that happens quite a bit. What is, has there been money put aside to replace those? How soon would that happen? What is the plan if trees are vandalized? Thank you.
We have another hand. It's going to be Roz. Go ahead, Roz.
Hi there. I also wanted to ask or to reiterate the question that Josh is asking. You know, anyone who's spent any time on Upper Market Street knows that it is a furious wind tunnel. And it looks as though these poor trees that have been there previously have fallen victim to some wind. So seeing the replacement trees, they don't actually look very hardy to me personally. And I am interested to know if there has been any consideration given to, to different species that might be more resilient in that neighborhood. That's it.
Thanks, Roz. Chris, would you be able to answer or provide some feedback on how these species were chosen? And if you have any information on when these trees might be planted? I don't know. This might be a question for you or Michelle. And also the question of what would happen when these trees are damaged or vandalized?
Sure, this is Chris Buck with Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry. And I think I probably will have Michelle answer a few of these. But I'll just throw in some of the, you know, as the urban forester, you know, my, my feedback on this. So there is a lot of discussion about replacement species that occurs within Public Works, both in operations and within our streetscape, landscape, architecture team. They're often, and Michelle would be able to speak to this better than I would, because the project team kind of leads the outreach. So there's typically community meetings and where that's being discussed. And we get a lot of great feedback from the public about things like deciduous trees or holding on to the same type so that we can still have habitat for the swallow-tailed butterflies. And what I should have done was, or what Michelle and I could have done is provide an example of the cultivar as it's doing well on Market Street and just show like what a big difference that does make. So that's something we, you know, we certainly could have done. But there are a lot of people involved with coming up with the replacement species. It's not just a single person, even as the urban forester or the project manager, there's way more people involved than just us. So a lot of, a lot of scrutiny, a lot of review and including public feedback as well. And then Michelle will address funding for replacement trees. We definitely, the whole idea is to protect the existing trees and not have to replace them. Understandably, sometimes things happen. But we can let Michelle kind of talk to that, the funding for replacements. It is something that's become more of a concern in some of the hearings that we've had with the rollout of Street Tree SF in the last few years. We've had a lot more folks making sure that when trees are planted, that they're well protected and that if there is an incident of vandalism and a tree needs to be replaced, that it be replaced expeditiously and not, not linger. But I, Michelle will speak to some of those contract details. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Chris. So to respond to the contract details, timeline of tree planting, currently we, we don't have a contractor on board yet. We're in the advertisement period. So as soon as the contractor comes on board, we will have a more definitive schedule. In general, however, the trees usually are planted near the tail end of the project. So I would estimate at this time the tree planting be closer to 2022, probably mid-year 2022. In terms of vandalism, in our contract, we do have included a three-year LTP, long-term plant establishment period as part of our contract. We also have a separate bid item for our contractor to cover expenses related to vandalism. So both of these two items have been in place so that we can fairly compensate our contractor to help us evaluate and maintain this plant establishment period and address any vandalism of the trees. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Chris. Is there anyone else that has not spoken on this item that would like to add any commentary? If there are no more comments for this item, I will now close this item and I'll make my recommendations to the director. I will call the next item, order number 203701 at 94 29th Street. I will ask the department to make its presentation.
Thank you. This is Chris Buck with Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry. And I'm going to share my screen as I present information for this item. Bear with me a moment. Nope, wrong document. Bear with me. Let's see. Screen sharing has stopped as the shared window is closed. Hold on a moment. Let me share a screen again. Let's pull this up and get it into presentation mode. Thank you. So again, Chris Buck with Public Works. This is to consider the removal of one street tree without replacement adjacent to 94 29th Street. And our urban forestry staff approved the removal and the public protested during the public notification period. So this is the subject tree, just jumping right into the site details. We received the removal application from the SFMTA. That's permit number 785179 to remove this ficus. And it's actually Ficus benjaminii. It's more common as a house plant. And it was a site that should have been paved over. But several years ago, someone saw the opening in the ground and the light bulb went off. And clearly, they just thought, let's throw in the house plant. So the MTA is the installing a new traffic signal right at the base of this tree basin. So just in general, separate from the project, when, if this site had been brought to our attention as a missing tree and someone in that property said, hey, can you plant a replacement tree? We're not allowed to plant trees within 25 feet to the approach of an intersection. So coming in the opposite direction of this photo, coming towards us, as you approach an intersection, we require that there be 25 feet of clearance. Now, it doesn't mean that we remove a tree, so I want to clarify that. We have plenty of trees that were planted before that particular guideline was established in the director's order. We have a director's order that establishes the maintenance and planting of street trees in regard to very specific measurements from utilities and street furniture and things like intersections. So just in general, this is already a tree that we don't typically plant in the public right of way. And as you can see, it's grown quite a bit over the road. So when we received this application for removal, based on the small size of the tree, at the staff level, our review of the application was essentially that we had to prove it for removal that the Ficus benjaminii is not a tree that's a sustainable tree in this location. So the MTA applied or moved it. It's again, the installation of a traffic signal for the intersection. As you approach the intersection from behind where this photo was taken, so behind me or behind the viewer. The MTA will have to pay an in-lug fee because this site cannot be replaced. In this particular case, not just because of the intersection, but also because of the traffic signal. So we will assess the in-lug fee, which is $2,100. I'll give you the exact amount just to confirm. It's $2,193, which is the cost for the city to purchase and plant a 24-inch box tree and water it once a week for three years. So that's what that in-lug fee amount is for. This is another view of the subject tree as you, from a different angle, as you approach Guerrero. And again, it's a, it's a relatively small tree. And MTA is looking to install a traffic signal literally within the basin where this tree is currently located. Our inspector prepared this PowerPoint and noted that it's the growth habit of the species is to be sort of drooping or weeping. So pruning is not going to be a long-term fix to maintaining visibility from the traffic signal. Here's another view of that. It's got a lower trunk to the right over the curb. And again, it's essentially at this moment, a bit of a globe canopy wise. And this is just not a sustainable situation. So at the staff level, we did approve the tree for removal. There are and may be occasions when we may not approve a tree for removal if there's a proposed traffic signal. So each case is evaluated on its individual merits. But in this particular case, the subject tree that conflicts with this infrastructure is not one that's really sustainable at this site. So our staff level decision was to approve the tree on the condition that the SFMTA pay our bureau $2,193, the in-lug fee, which funds the planting of a tree in another site in San Francisco. So what would happen is that MTA would install their facility, the traffic signal, and pay of any remaining portion of this site as there's no room to plant a tree adjacent to this property. So that was our, that concludes our staff presentation. That's the idea behind this. And again, during the posting period, we approved the removal and the public protested. And so that's why we're here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is the applicant here today to present?
All right, we have Deusan, who is, has his hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, again, my name is Dustin Young from MTA. Just to reiterate, this was part of a traffic signal upgrade that we're doing, a project of about two dozen locations throughout the city. And whenever we do try to, you know, do traffic signal upgrades, we do try to preserve as many trees as we can. So out of the, the two, almost two dozen intersections that we're working on in the city, this one is the only one where we will, are proposing to remove the tree. Again, this location is on the Vision Zero High Endery Network. So removing that tree will help to improve visibility at that corner for pedestrians crossing the street. And also, the MTA would also remove the parking space at the corner to further improve visibility for pedestrians. And just to kind of reiterate what Chris had mentioned, that it's the trees close to the property line or the corner. So removing the tree would greatly help with the pedestrian visibility. The last thing I should mention is the, I guess Chris touched on it, is the, the tree would overgrow over time that creates a maintenance burden and could obstruct the signal at that corner. So where the, that location that we're proposing the pole is in an ideal location for signal visibility and also for the pedestrians to be able to see the signal. And also, we're putting in an accessible pedestrian push button there. So people with visual impairments, say, if they're also in a wheelchair, they can easily roll up to it to be able to push the button and access it. So that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to add.
Thanks, Dustin. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Please use the raise your hand feature.
Yeah, we have Josh. Go ahead, Josh.
Thanks. I'll be real quick. Dustin, I appreciate your explanation of the, the project here, that this is an upgrade project. That actually was one of my questions because I see that there are streetlights that exist on that corner already. And so it was confusing why a tree could exist with those, but not with this upgrade. I do have a question, though, regarding the two questions. I heard you say that there are two dozen of these happening at the moment. Having been around the tree removal block many, many times for infrastructure like this, I'm wondering, is this always going to be the case if there is the, this upgrade to a site where there is an existing, an existing tree and an existing street light? What kinds of considerations SFMTA is taking to mitigate removals? And then the other question I have is regarding accountability for these in-lug fees from department to department. Just kind of how is that, how is that done? I know, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward when you've got a private property owner. They just write you a check and that's pretty easy to sort of follow that. But how is that done when it's department to department? It's really kind of the city paying itself, I guess. And yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Are you able to answer those questions from Josh?
All right. And so again, my name is Dustin Young again. So the existing traffic signals here are reaching the end of their useful lives. So that's why we're doing this signal upgrade and to kind of meet the latest standards. We put the new poles and new pedestrian countdown signals where they're most visible to optimize visibility and improve safety. So at 29th, I believe we're missing pedestrian countdown signals at two of the crossings. And we're also adding the, the large mast arms, which are overhead signals. So it's kind of getting a full upgrade of all the latest safety features.
Okay, I'm trying to get to the person with their hand up next. We already heard from. Okay, I'm trying to get to the person with their hand up next. Uh, we already heard from in, from Deusan from MTA. Uh, do we have anybody else with their hand up? Okay, uh, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um. Does the department um, have anything else that?
Hi, Chris Buck with Public Works. No, I think um, while we're on it. You know, my colleague with MTA mentioned it as, as I did in our presentation that we really are, these are case by case. And so as Dustin mentioned, they're really looking at avoiding those conflicts. Um, so. You know, we, our colleagues are definitely aware that they don't want to remove a street tree and, and create a conflict if they can avoid it. Um, so I'm heartened to hear the, on this particular round, that's a pretty impressive. Stat in terms of two dozen with, with one conflict. Um, so it's, it's a comment that I, I'm aware of. And it's certainly something that our department at Public Works is aware of. And it's something that we'll continue to monitor. But for sure. We, we really work to avoid conflicts and if we can't, then pruning, you know, is the first, always the first choice, pruning a tree. Um, whereas removal is really the last choice. So. I think this would be a much different conversation if we had a large, mature, healthy tree at this, this particular site for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, is there any other speakers who did not speak that would like to add to this uh? Item order two zero three seven zero one. If not, I will close this item. Um, and make my recognition to the director. We'll move on to the next item, order number two zero three seven zero two at nine hundred Kearney Street. Um, I'll have the department speak first and present the case.
Great, thank you. This is Chris Buck with Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry speaking. And getting in the hang of uh, unmuting first and then moving to share screen. Uh, so I can coordinate that a little bit better. Usually I get pretty good at it by middle of the hearing. Um, so I'll go ahead and share screen. And I, I also wanted to bring up. I want to make a habit of just throughout the hearing, reminding the public that um, someone may have submitted a written protest. Prior to the hearing and we'll have that document to notify them of any resulting decision. But for folks who have called in this evening and are following along, and this is our first interaction with you. Um, the best way to get on our mailing list, because we don't have a physical sign-in sheet, the way that we do at the front of the hearing room in City Hall. Is every case now, I'm just going to include um, this disclaimer that you could email, should email urban forestry. At SFD, uh, we got a typo there, SFDPW. Do not go with what's on screen. DPW dot O R G. And that's a way to get added to the mailing list. And so I'm going to be saying that at the end of each. Each case, albeit maybe a little bit more quickly. And we're gonna, I'll see if I can go in and fix that typo. So thank you. This is order number two zero three seven zero two. And adjacent to nine hundred Kearney Street. So this item is to consider the removal of one street tree. Without replacement, adjacent to nine hundred Kearney Street. Staff, urban forestry staff approved the removal and the public has protested. So the subject tree uh, to be removed is the tree here shown with the blue arrow. And I just want to confirm everyone can see that image. Um, so this is a ficus tree that is adjacent to. Uh, a blue curb zone. That's a, a zone for folks who are disabled. Call it a, a handicap zone. Um, that's just to point out, but the trees were moved for the SFMTA. Vision zero intersection improvement. Um, the pole is being replaced, an excavation required. Adjacent to that tree. Uh, the tree cannot be replaced here, adjacent to this location on the property. Due to the, the blue zone, the, the handicap zone. Um, so we have design standards for those uh, accessibility challenges and. That's something to note, this is removal without replacement. And this is probably a different site than Dustin's aware of. Here's another view of the same property. Again, tree to be removed for vision zero intersection improvement. And the tree can't be replaced due to the location of the blue zone. Uh, the pole excavation will be quite extensive. And so. SFMTA contractor will need to really dig in near the base of this tree to install the equipment. And then we have the subject tree is a ficus microcarpa nitida. A ficus tree, it's a very large stature tree at maturity, grows pretty quickly. And so we have a situation where we have a responsibility as the city to inform our colleagues with MTA. That this is a tree, it's going to be growing and obscuring. That traffic signal and/or streetlight on a regular basis. So the issues here are one of excavation. The amount of excavation required to remove and replace this pole. As well as sort of the wrong tree in the wrong place based on these infrastructure improvements. The tree also has very weak branching attachments. So many years ago. Um, probably easily over ten years ago, the adjacent property owner excessively pruned the tree. We call it topping. Topping or excessively pruning a tree in San Francisco is illegal. And we typically issue fines that are two thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars per tree at a minimum. For every tree that's improperly pruned. This was back when the city did not have the maintenance responsibility for street trees. So anyone. Out in the audience, when they have any questions about tree maintenance, should call three one one. And we will answer your questions about tree maintenance. The city is now responsible for maintaining street trees. And one of the reasons is to make sure that this sort of destructive pruning doesn't occur. Um, but you can see the, there's old pruning cuts with decay and large injuries. And these regrown stems are now prone to fail as the stems get much larger and heavier. They'll begin to split off that part of the, the stems. So similar to the, the previous case, we have a scenario where we've been approached. By the MTA about vision zero, public safety concerns. Uh, you, you know, a pole, traffic signal improvement. And we're looking at this tree and unfortunately for the tree, it's not uh, suitable in this location. It's got structural issues. There's going to be long-term problems with this tree. And now that it's been brought to our attention. At the staff level, because the SFMTA applied or move it, the staff decision was to approve this tree for removal. And we will require that the applicant pay the in lieu fee of two thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars. That fee is typically transferred internally, often it's referred to as a journal transfer. Um, but it is uh, essentially one department with a different city agency paying another. So although we are one city theoretically, when it comes to budgets, we are. Much different. So um, Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry will ensure that we gather that in Luffy. As part of the conditions of approval. Um, but those are the factors that our staff weighed. And approve the tree for removal without replacement. Again, without replacement due both to the blue curb zone. And the need to maintain an accessible space for those with disabilities. But also, we would never allow a tree of this size at maturity to be planted within. Nine fifteen or twenty-one feet of a streetlight, depending on the size of the tree at maturity. So this tree, this site cannot be replanted. So it's removal without replacement. And that concludes our staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, may I ask uh, SFNTA to present?
And who do we have um, from MTA to present? Is that Dustin?
I think it's Dustin.
Well, good evening. Uh, this is Dustin White, transportation planner with the MTA.
Okay, one second Dustin, you need to be promoted. That way you can uh, you'll be able to present and share your screen. Dustin White, correct? I think we lost him. One second.
Yes, it is Dustin White.
Are you able to hear me now?
Uh, well Dustin, we had to promote you to panelist. That way you'll be able to share your screen. So we. Need to start over with your introduction.
Uh, good evening, Dustin White, transportation planner, SFMTA. Um, I don't think I need to share any graphics given uh, the overview Chris provided. Um, but just for some additional context and background for those listening in. Um, I will say that, that this signal improvement project is coming out of a community-based planning process. Known as the District Three Pedestrian Safety Project. Um, the final report for that project was adopted uh, over the summer by the San Francisco County Transportation Authority. Um, and one of the recommendations coming out of that study was that uh, the MTA pursue implementation of a pedestrian scramble. At this intersection. Um, a pedestrian scramble is a signal design which enables pedestrians to cross. Uh, cross in all directions of an intersection, including diagonally, uh, separated from vehicular movements. Um, pedestrian scrambles are fairly common actually in, in this neighborhood, in the Chinatown uh, neighborhood. Um, and we have recently implemented two along Kearney Street with Kearney and Clay. Um, as well as Kearney and Washington. And this is um, the next adjacent uh, intersection. Um, it, it is following on a, a pattern of pedestrian collisions. We've had six injury collisions here in the past five years. Um, I believe Chris mentioned, this is another intersection located on the city's vision zero high injury network. Where there's a concentration of about seventy percent of all severe and fatal. Traffic collisions occurring on a very small percentage, just about twelve percent of city streets. Um, so our, our, our initial intent here was to try to implement a pedestrian scramble without making significant modifications. To the signal infrastructure. Unfortunately, that's not possible. Um, this, this signal dates from the early nineteen seventies. Um, the conduits and, and the poles are in pretty bad condition. And so we're proposing to replace quite a bit of the. Existing infrastructure. And I think Chris provided a pretty good explanation um, regarding the replacement of, of some of the poles of this northeast corner. And um, and what they mean for, for the fate of this tree. So I'm, I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Alright, we have a member from uh. From the public, Josh, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh. So in my daytime job, I am a certified access specialist and an attorney specializing in the ADA. And I do um, title two evaluations under the ADA. Transition plans and self-evaluation plans for cities and counties and universities. So. Chris, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a, a little, I'm gonna give you a little free, free help here with your wording. Uh, rather than calling it a handicapped spot, he calls it accessible parking spot. If that, so there you go. You got that one for free. Um, alright, uh. So just a, a couple of notes here that uh, this subject tree doesn't look too different from the one right next to it, or frankly, any of those trees along the block. So I'm wondering if this removal is driven more by the health of the tree or the infrastructure. Um, secondly, that this is a, our second on this agenda of an SFMTA tree removal. Uh, without replacement. So we're taking out trees that are a form of a public resource and infrastructure in favor of some other public infrastructure. And just to, a note that in my experience, that if ever it's between a tree and a pole, the pole always seems to win. And this is all in the context of this uh, well-established uphill battle that we've got against uh, climate change. And as our Department of the Environment has stated, unless we are planting and preserving our urban canopy. We are not going to meet our climate goals in time to stand a chance against an inevitable climate disaster. So just at some point, like to see whether our infrastructural decisions are going to start considering the science of climate change as opposed to. Business as usual and this disjointed or disjunctiveness between what our, our climate action strategy says we need to do and what we are actually doing in real life. And then in terms of the actual accessibility of the space, it's a little. I, I'm, I guess I'm a little confused how we can have a pole, two trash cans and what looks like an electric box in the accessible parking spaces, unloading area. But we can't have a tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Um, Chris, can you confirm that uh, this removal is due to infrastructure and not health?
Thanks, Chris with Public Works. Well, I think it's both, you know, it's um, again, if this was a. A tree really worthy of, of fighting for, we would, we would tell the SFMTA, you know, we think you've got a challenge on your hands at this site. You know, we have a mature tree in good condition and, and it's really worth preserving. It's really worth. Altering your project in a, in a significant way. So, you know, it's both things. The. This tree is definitely in poor condition. It was, it was topped. Um, so we made the point of including those images just to show how. Those stems will split apart over time due to the uh, large wounds and decay present. So. You know, we want to fight for the trees that are great trees and not even great trees, just even fair. We can, we can fight to protect fair as well. Um, but we do need to choose our battles. Uh, so, you know, it's really both. There's, there's two issues there. Both infrastructure impact and poor condition of the tree. And just to, to reiterate, for sure, the story of our life every day is, is fighting to protect trees. Within the urban environment where um, they come under constant attack. Well, attack is a strong word, but it feels that way. Um, by other entities that all feel like they have important infrastructure needs. So it, it is a, a constant battle that the city needs to do to juggle what uh, Mr. Clip stated. Which is, you know, climate emergency and environmental benefits. With also very specific targeted public safety concerns. Um, but he also makes a great point about some of the other infrastructure uh, issues there regarding garbage cans or toders. Um, utility vaults above ground, uh, a parking sign. And it's the tree that doesn't get replanted. Um, but I do know that those sites, and I, I appreciate it. But the um. Accessible parking spot is, you know, those are regulated and looked at quite closely. If there's any good news, they typically, existing trees do coexist. Um, so it's never a reason to remove a tree. More just point of discussion about replacement. Um, so really great points and. We, great, great feedback. We're, we're constantly battling other, other entities to protect and carve out. Space for street trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, is there anyone from the public that has not spoken that would like to speak on this item? If there are no more comments, I will now close the item and make my recommendations to the director. Uh, moving on to the next item, order two zero three seven zero three, one fifteen Jordan. Um, I asked Chris to give it's presentation.
Uh, thank you, Chris Buck with Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry. And. Let's move this to the next item. And just wanted to reiterate that we have a typo here, but if you're looking to get notified of the resulting decision. You'd email urban forestry at S F D P W dot O R G. Um, so this next order to confirm is two zero three seven zero three. Removal of one street tree with replacement adjacent to one fifteen Jordan Avenue. And staff has denied the removal and the applicant has appealed. Uh, so the subject tree is a carob tree. It's serotonina siliqua. Typically male, uh, male carobs without the fruit. The tree itself overall is healthy and sustainable. I don't have the photos as part of this presentation. But our staff evaluated the secondary and small branches within the canopy to make sure there's no hidden cracks. Or any reason that this tree should be removed. So. that this tree should be removed. So the property owner has applied to remove the tree due to a conflict with the driveway and curb cut. That's typically we say proposed, but in this case, it sounds from our staff presentation here that the project itself already got approval for installing and constructing a garage. So many years ago, we worked with both planning and building inspection to create a process where when an applicant is proposing to build a garage or driveway curb cut, if there's a tree conflict that they first come to urban forestry to pursue that permit, permission first. And so it used to not be that way. Actually, many, many years ago, when I was at Friends of the Urban Forest, and I was also protesting trees and advocating for protections, we would see driveways approved and then Public Works would have a hearing. But it really took the authority and power away from Public Works to kind of have a de facto project that's approved. And now here we are saying, you know, no, you can't remove the tree. So I don't know the exact timeline on this one. We have a number of older permits that were approved before the new process. It could have been that that lingered and just didn't go through the, the current process. But that's the situation we find ourselves in. The proposed removal is for a driveway curb cut to allow access to a new garage. Now, I will say that urban forestry inspectors, our team, we really like to keep our arborist hats on and not sort of wade into project review and putting a planner's hat on. And so generally speaking, the way we can do that consistently is if a tree is relatively healthy and sustainable at the staff level, we go on that and we base the removal or an approval at the staff level based on the overall tree condition. So based on this tree's condition of being in good good vigor, good structure, we did, and let me see if I may have lost my screen here. We went ahead and denied the request to remove this tree. And I'm going to show a couple more photos. So I just want to show a few more situational photos from beginning. No. So here's a view of the tree and the sidewalk. There is some sidewalk damage that the root system is creating. But it's pretty routine for a carob tree. But I will note, if you can see the lighter colored shading in the sidewalk, those sidewalk squares mean they've been replaced and they're older than the sidewalk squares that are closer to us in the foreground. So it is a species that does cause sidewalk damage. And that's a pretty routine occurrence. We just swap out the sidewalk, root prune, and repair the sidewalk and pour back. So the sidewalk damage itself is not a reason enough to, you know, approve this tree for removal. What our staff has done is shown a proposed potential tree basin if the tree were to remain in place. Another scenario that our inspector wanted to just share, because we want to, we obviously, we want to see what all means, by all means necessary, can we avoid removing this tree? One idea potentially is an offset curb cut to the adjacent garage. This is an example of that potential. So we have a relatively, we have a healthy tree. The tree is considered large, mature, established tree. It's a tree that at the urban forestry inspector position, we deny the request for removal. There is another tree to the right of this tree. It looks like it would be to the north. One option, if approved for removal, and again, I'm just throwing out scenarios for the hearing officer and then the director consider, is if approved, can this tree be replanted? And I'm not, in preparation with the hearing, you know, that's not something I'm, I'm seeing here, but I'd like to hear from the applicant regarding placement of utilities. If approved for removal, there's a sewer vent cover right there in the center of the current curb cut. So the trees, the tree can't be planted within five feet of that either direction. So, you know, I want to hear a little bit more about potential replacement tree locations as we consider this. But to be consistent with how we've handled similar cases, staff deny the request for removal and then the applicant appealed that denial. And that's how we're adhering this evening. So that concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, and we have one hand raised. It's Roz. Gene, the hearing officer, that's okay, right? Go ahead and let, go ahead.
That's fine. Yes.
Go ahead, Roz.
Did you want the applicant to speak first?
Yeah, go ahead, Roz. You are Roz, correct?
Yes, I was wondering if you wanted the applicant to speak first.
Are you, okay, so you're not the applicant?
No.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Are they here? If you are, please raise your hand.
Okay, there's Roy. Roy, are you the?
Yeah, hi, this is Roy Leggett. I am the consulting arborist who wrote an arborist report on behalf of the applicant. And this report was sent in by Geisler Architects to the Department of Public Works with the tree removal permit application. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that report that was filed. And my assessment, there's more than just sidewalk damage here. There's also very significant curb damage. There's a granite curb stone that has been lifted up by three and a half inches and rotated outward to an angle of twenty degrees with a horizontal displacement into the roadbed of five inches at the joint that is right there where the tree is. So the tree has managed to move this granite curb stone three and a half inches up and out into the street by five inches. And roots are in a very large mass behind that curb stone. The construction will require replacement of that. And I think that is a really significant root impact and a lot more significant than the sidewalk damage because we, we can't do anything to, like, like with the sidewalk, like Chris said, we can do a sidewalk offset or expanding the basin or something like that. But I can't do anything with the curb except put it back in the same location. So I think that the, the combined loss of roots and primarily the curb damage replacement root issue is, is what I is going to really spell the end for this tree. With screen sharing, I do have a photo that I took looking directly down the curb line that shows the displacement, if you need me to share that.
Okay, so I have to promote you and so you'll need to accept what comes on your screen and then you'll be able to share your screen, okay?
All right.
Okay, Roy, you should be good to go. You'll need to unmute. Roy, you'll need to unmute and then you're good.
Yes, okay, I've now unmuted. Let's see, as far as share screen, I can do that as well. Let me let me see what I can do here.
You can also submit that to the, to the email as well as to the here.
Well, it, yeah, it may, it may be that I need to approach it in that way. I'm not sure that I can actually share this. I, I'm not technologically able to do this for some reason. So, yeah, Mr. Buck, I would be happy to send this to you by email as an attached file.
Okay, thank you.
Some other, with the, with the appellant or the property owner, would you like to speak as well? I believe that was is it Roz? I can't see your name. You can go ahead if you'd like.
Oh, am I unmuted?
You are.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say this is actually near my neighborhood. Jordan Street is a really, really beautiful tree-lined neighborhood. It's very lush. It's a very, it's just a couple of blocks along this street. And I think that the Bureau of Urban Forestry did a, made the right decision here by denying the application. I wanted to ask, is this, was this Friends of the Urban Forest planting? Is that what you said, Chris? Don't know.
Chris wanted to unmute. We don't, we don't know that for sure, but it's, it's very possible.
Yeah. So in cases like these, I kind of feel like it's, you know, like someone gets a puppy and then the puppy gets old and they want to get rid of it, you know? Because it's not convenient. I think that it's possible that, sorry about the dinging here, that perhaps there might be some compromise made. Who cares about the curb, honestly, you know? I, I think if you're rebuilding your garage, you could probably fix the curb, right? You might have funding for that. I understand that there might be some root issues, but it seems, I don't know, a bit negligent in my mind to just remove the tree for, for this purpose of building a garage. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, and go ahead, Josh.
Thanks. Yeah, we've crunched some numbers and in the last year or so, around twenty-five to thirty percent of tree removals in the city are not even related to the health of the tree, but are for things like infrastructure, like driveways and these poles that we've been talking about and streetlights. In terms of the tree evaluations, I have to say it's pretty confusing. We've got Mr. Leggett, who I know is, has a long history of of working as an arborist. And is hired by this applicant who has incentive to make a tree seem kind of like a nightmare and find all the problems with it, because as we can see, construction is already underway. And so if things don't go exactly as planned, that could cost a lot of money. Meanwhile, it seems like no alternatives have been explored here in any seriousness, which is especially disappointing, that that wasn't done by our own planning department. And so we've got our own city official responsible for tree evaluations, day in and day out. And they're saying, Chris is saying it's healthy and not causing anything other than a routine, routine damage. So as a member of the public, it's really confusing. Who to believe, the, the arborist hired by the applicant who's got a lot of money on the line? Or the arborist that your average taxpayer is, is supporting? But I would like to see that all alternatives be exhausted here. We should not, under any circumstances, be taking out a healthy, sustainable tree while our city is in a declared climate emergency, just point blank. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. I have a question for Roy. Do you know if there's any utility work being done to that property? And is there any plan to replant the tree or replace the tree?
Hi, yeah, it's Roy here. There is utility work being done. The first of all, I'm not in support of removing trees just because some construction project wants a tree removed. I mean, that's just not my approach. But I think that we have a tree here that with utility repairs or utility upgrades, things like sewer, and I don't know the exact locations of all this stuff right off the top of my head. But I know there were plans that were submitted to Bureau of Urban Forestry to show all of this stuff. I do know that with utility work, sidewalk repairs like Chris suggested and the the curb stone, the curb is an eighteen inch installation. So it's pretty much removal of all of the roots within about twelve inches of the base of the tree on the street side to fix that. It, it's a lot of impact on this tree. And I, I don't see a problem structurally with the tree above. It's all going to be a structural problem or a compromised situation with a potential of a tree blowing down because of root losses. That's the only impact I see. And I think it's a cumulative thing between, you know, the, the apron, the sidewalk, utilities and the the curb stone. And I just think that that's the, the real picture below ground. So that's my take on it.
Thanks, Roy. Is there any other public comment from that would like to speak on this item?
No, we don't have any other hands up. We can move to the next one.
Okay, let's do that. Next item, order number 203-704-439-HILL. Chris, can you speak to this item?
Yes, good evening. This is Chris Buck with San Francisco Public Works, Bureau of Urban Forestry. We'll pull this one up. And again, for those viewing from other means, you can email, if you want to be added to the contact list, email urban forestry@sfdpw.org. And also, we will make sure that the hearing officer, that you have those photos. We have them in our tree record, but photos of curb impacts, that should have been included in our PowerPoint. So we'll forward those images to you as well. And we know you already have the arborist report. So moving on to the next item, 439-439-Hill Street. This is to consider the removal of one street tree with replacement. A staff at the Urban Forestry, Bureau of Urban Forestry approved the removal and the public protested. And also the removal of one street tree with replacement. Staff denied the removal and the applicant appealed. So we can have a scenario where we have a mixed approach. We've approved one tree and the public protested. We denied a request to remove a second tree and the applicant has protested, which means that we have both trees that are essentially up for discussion. So this image shows the two subject trees. We order the trees with a flow of traffic on that side of the street. So if you were the tree crew rolling down the road, the first tree you come to would be tree one, the second one is tree two. So just a bit about our nomenclature there. So these are raphialopsis trees or Indian Hawthorns. They're not really Hawthorne. But that's the joy of common names. They're confusing. So they're a small statured tree of maturity and these are probably, believe it or not, probably at least close to twenty years old, fifteen years old. And yet they're not all that large canopy-wise. So we're going to really get into the, the weeds on this one. Basically, the red lines here show the approximate location of proposed driveway. Tree number two approved for driveway construction by our staff. We approved that tree for removal. We denied tree number one. So the proposed design showing the new driveway and replacement tree to the east. So the tree that's in conflict, directly in conflict with the driveway, if approved for removal, there is room to plant a replacement tree as shown below in this, in this plan. The sewer line will need to be shifted into the driveway, which the owner has agreed to, but is an added cost. And there's a few other scenarios which we'll also share as well. Now, the replacement tree would be allowed to be planted nine feet from the neighbor's tree because that tree is a small, relatively small tree and not doing that well. And I just want to point that, that's, this tree is to the left of the subject tree. It's Brazilian pepper. It's kind of struggling. You can see some dieback in the top of the canopy and that's not typical for the species. So what we're saying is that if approved for removal, there is room for a replacement species that could be a larger statured tree at maturity that would provide far greater Um, that would provide far greater benefits than the small Indian Hawthorn that's currently planted there, which is approximately six-inch diameter tree. So again, photo of neighbor's tree. And then tree number one was not approved for, by staff because the proposed construction does not necessitate removal. The owners wished to remove this, the second tree, tree one, and replace the tree with a large statured species. Um, so just general comments from our staff person that pulled together the PowerPoint. Uh, just generally, the owner's not a huge fan of the species. Um, due to the sidewalk and road clearance issues, the branching structure makes it difficult to prune for clearance. So this was a tree that was popular in the late nineteen nineties. But the city realized pretty quickly that it, it had challenges in terms of training it up and over the roadway and the sidewalk. So that's why we're really going into the great details on this species growth habit, because it really plays into you know, the owner's request to remove both trees and propose to plant one large stature replacement tree. That said, understandably, we're in a climate emergency and just generally at the staff level, we're not typically looking to add trees to be added to removal application, even if it is a small statured tree. If it's there and it's relatively healthy. At the staff level, we generally don't approve trees like that for removal. But it's certainly something the applicant is applying for, and that's why we're discussing it in great detail. So there's a few um alternatives, or at least scenarios for consideration. Uh, so one would be to uphold the decision to allow removal of tree number two with replacement east of the driveway. And the owner would need to shift their sewer trap cleanout to at least be five feet away from that location. Another scenario would be to allow the removal of both trees with replacement of both trees. The third option is removal of both trees. The sewer stays in the same location and only the tree to the west is replanted. This would have to be a large statured species and the owner would have to pay the two thousand one hundred ninety-three dollar in Luffy for the loss of one tree site. Site plan shown to the right is the owner's preference. So we're currently reviewing on screen the owner's preference, uh, as stated, as part of the preparation for this hearing this evening, which would be uh removing the tree and keeping the existing tree, tree one. Well, excuse me, I believe the, the owner will clarify, but I believe one scenario is the owner would like to remove both trees. So this is a scenario where the tree on the right could remain and the tree on the left, a new tree number two would be planted as a replacement. So there's a few different scenarios that have been discussed. Again, from our urban forestry team, when a tree is relatively healthy, you know, we really are inclined to deny the request to remove the tree. This tree is quite small. So this one felt like we had approved one of them. But it's, it's also just not a large, it's not going to be a large statured tree. It's not going to get much larger than this. These are literally about twenty years old and they grow very slowly. So that's the information about the application, some of the scenarios being proposed, potential scenarios. Again, we really try to explore all options and, you know, have it all be as part of the discussion on the table um, to submit to you, to of course, go through that and then make a recommendation to the director. Um, in this case, just to clarify, the in Luffy is, is not greater than the appraised value of the tree. So if it's removal without replacement, it would just be a standard in Luffy. The appraised value is below the standard in Luffy. Um, but that's probably a lot of information to digest for one small site. But to be consistent with how we've handled similar cases, we approved one tree. In the path of the driveway, we denied the other. And we've received both a public protest of the tree we approved and an applicant appeal of the tree that we denied. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, can I have the property owner speak? Is that Naomi?
Uh, hi, this is Naomi Hanson. I am with Terry and Terry Architecture, where the applicant, the property owner is present also and might want to speak. I think Chris's summary was very informative. Uh, we appreciate the approval for the removal of the first tree so that the driveway can be placed. The request to remove the second tree was more just a result of a conversation we had with Steve Kelly on site when he came to tag the, the tree and just discussing the, the qualities and the virtues of these trees. They are uh, they, they're nice trees. We don't dislike them. The, they do grow very, very low. They're actually, in all the research we've done, have found that they're usually used more as an ornamental shrub. So we feel like there's not very much potential for this tree to grow upward. And as it is now, the branches are so low, they're a hazard and they're the, the, the limbs are maybe five feet above the sidewalks. So they're, but most pedestrians have to make a detour to avoid the tree to start with. It could be a hazard for a visually impaired person, of course. The street sweeping vehicles can't even get to the curb because the branches are so low that the truck can't even reach the, the curb. So with this consideration, um, the proposal to remove the second tree and replace it with a large statured tree, we feel would be beneficial for the public for the, so that they can use the sidewalk more comfortably. And a large statured tree would have a canopy volume that would be probably equivalent to the two trees that we would be removing. So there is, in the long term, once the large statured tree is established, there would not be a significant loss of canopy volume. The the approved uh, application to remove just the one tree and replace it to the left side of the driveway facing the house is also acceptable. Um, we just feel we just feel like it would be beneficial for everybody to just have a larger statured tree in the location of the second tree. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Can I have the property owner talk?
Uh, is the property owner Dale?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm the property owner. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Um, yeah, I'm the property owner, Dale Hill. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think both Chris and Naomi covered, covered most everything. Um, you know, I've been at the property for almost around seven years. We desire to um, to remodel and, and improve the house. And I know people have brought up kind of the issue of climate change. And um, I think um, in remodeling the house and providing off-street parking with the availability of, of or the ability to, to then have an electric car, um, I think will go a long way towards you know, helping meet climate goals. And you know, while we um, regret the loss of, of street trees, we do believe uh, these trees are, are not really appropriate. Um, as Naomi mentioned, they're um, at a height of about five feet. Um, the, the branches continually grow down and requiring a lot of maintenance. They um, block the majority of the sidewalk. And so people regularly have to move around. I, I regularly hit my head on, on low branches and have seen pedestrians hit their head and, and um, or need to kind of um, detour around the trees. And so while the canopy is nice, um, I don't believe kind of they, they're the appropriate tree and would love to replace it with a, um, a larger, replace both with a larger statured tree. That being said, if, um, if we can only uh, get approval for removal of one tree, you know, the, we can, we can move forward with our project, um, which would be, which would be kind of, which would be great. Um, and if we need to replace a tree, that's, that's, you know, we're willing to do that. We do feel that um, it could potentially crowd out uh, the owner's tree while, while the neighbor's tree, while it's a small tree now, as Chris has pointed out, if, if that tree, which is not doing so well, um, needs to be um, replaced at some point, it would be limited in size as to what that, the replacement tree could be. So thank you. That's, that's all I have to say.
Um, if you, Dale, if you needed to relocate the sewer, uh, would you be able to do that?
Uh, you know, we, we believe we can. It would, it would be, I mean, obviously, it's, it's a, it's an added cost. But um, we believe there's the opportunity, the ability to do that.
Thank you. Um, I'll ask the, uh, anyone from the public to speak. I think Josh has his hands up.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I, I very much appreciate the, the homeowner talking about getting an electric car. That is something that is part of the city's climate action strategy as to carbon mitigation. The importance of trees is for carbon sequestration. And that's, that's the difference is that we're talking about, you know, mitigation is reducing the amount that we put into the air. Sequestration is reducing the amount that's already there. And that's what trees do twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and that's why we need them so desperately. Um, in terms of the maintenance, uh, after the passage of Prop E in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, that is now the city's responsibility. To the extent that there, if there is any type of removal that happens here, I would ask that it be minimal, um, that all efforts be made to uh, ensure that a large statured tree could be put in and that not just a large statured tree, but a large statured tree that's going to have the maximum climate impacts in terms of its carbon sequestration and its support for the local ecology. Thank you.
Um, I have a question for Josh, actually. Would you consider these trees as sort of a hazard because it's so low-hanging? I think, uh, they mentioned that it's about five feet above the sidewalk.
I want to bill you for this. No, I'm kidding. Um, yeah, I believe the clearance is supposed to be seventy-two inches um, under the California Building Code. So um. It's seventy-two or eighty. Now, now you're catching me on this. I'm spacing out on this. I wasn't prepared to answer these questions, but in any event, um, yeah, no, five feet is too low. And that is something that the city deals with uh, all over the place. There, you know, they, Chris could tell you how much they, you know, prune up for clearances on public rights of way all over the city. So that's really not a, a, a very uncommon thing in terms of the city managing that.
Thanks, Josh. Um, I don't know, I don't think there's any other public comment on this. I don't see any hands raised, so I'm going to move on to next uh, item. Uh, so I'll be closing this item two zero three seven zero four, moving on to two zero three seven zero five. Chris, can I have you speak to this?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Chris Buck with Public Works, Bureau of Urban Forestry. And let me queue up this PowerPoint. Current slide. Um, again, if you're listening, you can get added to our contact list at urbanforestry@sfdpw.org. Um, so we have, it's a, quite a run on these um, garage tree conflicts. But we have another one adjacent to fifteen oh six Willard Street. And it's to consider the removal of one street tree without replacement at fifteen oh six Willard. Staff has approved the removal and the public has protested. Um, so here's an image of the subject tree. It's a purple leaf plum tree. It's Prunus saracifera. And then the cultivar is Crowder vesuvius. This is a tree that's one of the first to flower in the winter. So it actually usually flowers right around the time of uh, the Super Bowl, which is kind of a fun way to ask property owners if they say, oh, my tree's dead. Well, no, it, it's probably just deciduous. It's sleeping in the winter. So this is a tree that was probably overplanted throughout the city for many, many decades. And we've really tried to rein in the planting of these because there were so, so many were planted. Now, that's all a side note. What I can tell you about this species is that it's a medium, uh, sort of medium-paced grower. It's not a long-lived uh, statured tree. So after twenty years, it starts to develop some decay and issues. Um, so we'll kind of review um, both the site and the tree itself as part of this discussion. Here's another view of the subject tree. So we're looking at the subject property and the, the tree in question here is on the left. Um, so it's a, considered a small tree at maturity. It's located here on the plans, the plans. Uh, the applicant has submitted a call for the driveway curb cut, a new driveway curb cut to be located that would conflict with the existing street tree. Um, in terms of the overall tree itself, I just wanted to point out, it's, again, big picture. It's, it's not a long-lived tree, but twenty years is still a, a solid pole if you're a street tree. And this one, though, does have an established lean over the road. So the thing I can see right away is that while everyone's doing the best they can to avoid this tree long-term, uh, you know, it takes someone new to the neighborhood, come in at night and not pay attention. And they're gonna potentially yank the tree down and/or damage their vehicle. So just pointing out that lean over the roadway, uh, the trunk is essentially right at the curb with very little clearance, if any, for cars to park or pull up. Um, in terms of overall structure, the, the, the structure of the tree is fair. Um, I don't see a lot of photos of that in the presentation. But not the largest tree in the world, of course. It's, it's relatively small. And again, with the proposed uh, new driveway, there is another street tree adjacent to this property and that's on the right in this image. This is, it used to be considered a eucalyptus, but with grad students these days discovering genetic essentially genetic tracing, we now call this, we're, it's moved into a different genus. It's corimbia. So it's a corimbia phycopholia, often referred to as red flowering eucalyptus, but it's not a eucalyptus. So um, it's actually a large statured tree at maturity. It's not so much a very tall fast grower. It's, it gets usually wide and stout. It does have a very large unusual pruning cut. And you can see from this view, uh, I spoke earlier about concerns about pedestrians potentially hitting themselves. Um, I don't know what the exact measurement is here, but it's something that we should keep an eye on. But it is technically, this corimbia phycopholia is technically within the public right of way. Uh, currently, the plan of the property owners to retain and protect this tree during construction. Um, but I probably will just, as a side note, ask a little bit more about the clearance at this site and make sure it's uh, not a public safety concern. Um, we've talked a lot about driveway tree conflicts today. There's not a whole lot to add here other than the purple leaf plum is not a very long-lived species. This one has some structural issues. The permanent lean over the road is a bit of a challenge as a, as a tree manager. And it's conflicting with the proposed new driveway. Um, so again, if the tree was larger, healthier, better specimen, at the staff level, we would start the process with a denial. And this particular case, for the reasons I've highlighted, this was not a tree that we felt like we could really um, fall down on our swords and, and protest and protect uh, from development. And so again, this would be removal without replacement. The in Luffy in this case is two thousand one hundred ninety-three. And that's uh, the appraised value of the tree for a tree this size would be far less than that. So in this particular case, that's the most we could get for removal without replacement if this is approved. if this is approved for removal. So that concludes the staff presentation. And again, this plan shows proposed curb cut with the existing trees. And one existing street tree would remain within the, it's essentially on the property line. Part of it's in the right of way, part of it's on property, but that's proposed to remain on site. Thank, thank you, and bless you.
Thank you, Chris. Is Gwen the property owner or applicant?
Yeah, I'm the property owner and the applicant. Can you hear me or?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
So, hi, everyone. I just had one correction to make. It's regarding the location of the tree. The plan that you have is incorrect, and actually, the tree is located one-third into the future driveway. And I made the correction, so I don't know why you have that version of the plans. So that, you know, it's really like in the middle of the driveway. It's not on the property line with my neighbor. And in the meantime, the water district installed their main, which is next to the juniper, the planting, the beautification, the planter, that's next, just in front of the eucalyptus. And they just added, if you want, I can share a picture of the current status. If you want, if I have a way to share a picture that I have, that I sent by email yesterday, but I don't know if you got it.
Okay, yes, I can go ahead and allow you to share your screen. One second.
Tell me when you see it.
Okay. Go ahead, Gwen.
Do you see it? Do you see the picture?
Not yet.
Yeah, hold on.
There should be a share button in the bottom right-hand corner, once you select the window that you want to share.
Yep. Share. Oh, tells me to, is it chair?
Air button?
No, it tells me to quit. Okay, don't worry. But I sent it to you by email, so I don't know if you have it in your email, in the urban forestry email?
Make sure.
So basically, it shows the front, the front of the house. It's a picture that I was taking like two days ago. And you can really see that the tree is in the middle of the future driveway, and you can see the location of the water main that was installed a few weeks ago. And the proposed electric and gas lines, we're still waiting for PG&E approval. So until we have the approval for the lines, there is no way I know, I could know where I could add beautification because I'm completely in favor of planting new trees and adding beautification. So my goal was to add planters between the sidewalk and the street, wherever I can do it. I mean, if I have room left, because it's a pretty crowded area already. And I'm also planning to add a tree between one of the retention wall and my stairwell, the staircase that goes to the house, to the entry of the house. And I'm working with PG&E. They send me a list of approved trees that I can plant, so I have that list. Because they also need access to the meters, to the gas meter. So it's, it's tricky. I'm really trying to plant trees, but it's crowded and I have constraints. So, but the thing is that I can't promise what tree I'm going to plant now because of the the lines, the locations.
Thank you, Gwen. I'll open it up to public comments. I think Josh's hand is raised.
Yeah, one second. Let me get Josh on. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Make the point that so far tonight, except for the Market Street project, every single tree proposed for removal tonight has had nothing to do with the health of the tree and has been proposed for removal because of infrastructure, whether that's new infrastructure like a driveway or upgraded infrastructure like a street light, and this is our third driveway tonight. As far as the purple leaf plums go specifically, I plant, I'm a volunteer planting leader with Friends of the Urban Forests. I've been doing it for over 10 years. And when I first started with planting with Fuff, we did plant purple leaf plums, and that was taken off the list pretty quickly because they, they don't live very long and they don't generally have very great structure. So I agree with Chris on all of that, that, what he said about the, the purple leaf plum specifically. That said, again, we should just, we can't be taking trees out and failing to replace them because of driveways. I really do appreciate the applicant sentiments about what she's trying to do, and I thank her for, for saying that. I'm going to lay this at the feet of our planning department, though, because it looks like, once again, our planning department has failed to consider the fact that there's a tree here, and by doing that is failing our city. Every one of us on this call, I suspect, is doing our part to fight for our city and our planet, but our planning department, meanwhile, isn't even thinking about trees, which, as I said earlier, our Department of Environment has identified as a critical aspect of our climate strategy. Our planning department is failing us by failing to consider trees, and they really need to be taken to task for this obviously repeated failure. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Noted. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm going to close this item, move on to the next order.
I'm sorry, officer, we do have one. We have Lance.
Okay, sorry about that, Lance. Go ahead.
Unmute. Can you hear me? Okay. Actually, this is for, for Gene. It's a, a change in the agenda that I heard about earlier today from the superintendent of Bureau of Urban Forestry. The number nine on your list, 203707, she indicated would be removed from this hearing and reheard at a different time. I wondered if you had that same information. And also, on number 10, 203708, 12 trees, there are only eight trees that qualified under that order. So hopefully, I give you a little bit of time in the next two items to check on that and hopefully take care of the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Chris?
We only have one other item until the next, the final two, so I'll just head on with the order number 203706, 4840 Mission. Chris, if you can make your presentation, please.
There we go. Good evening. Chris Buck with Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry. And quick confirmation from, for Mr. Carnes. Absolutely as noted, and we'll, we'll get to that in those items, nine and 10. So, and also, I do want to say, I will find out for my team why I did not have the most up-to-date image. So as a hearing officer, you know, we will provide you with that documentation. We clearly have it. I just don't happen to have it tonight. And while the applicant was speaking, I tried to log into my computer remotely to get that, but I wasn't able to pull it up, so I'm going to give that to you tomorrow as a follow-up item. So our next hearing item is this here. Let's go from the current slide. To consider the removal of 11 trees with replacement at 4840 Mission Street. Staff approved the removals and the public protested during the public notification period. I'm going to show some diagrams of the subject trees. We have 10 street trees and we have one significant tree. And I just want to explain what a significant tree means. What, what that is, is in 2006, our urban forestry ordinance was amended to allow protections that street trees have for trees that are on private property but within 10 feet of a public right-of-way, with the idea that trees that are near the right-of-way are really benefiting the, the public. A concept we all, I think, can easily agree to. The criteria just needs to be, have one of three criteria met to be considered a significant tree, and that's a height in excess of 20 feet, trunk diameter in excess of greater than 12 inches, four and a half feet above grade, and a canopy width greater than 15 feet. So again, most of these trees here, 10, will be street trees that are within the public right-of-way that are the maintenance responsibility of the city, the Bureau of Urban Forestry, and one significant tree that's on inside property, but has the same protections as if it were a street tree because of the values that it provides. So we have a diagram of the subject trees, existing street trees to be removed, significant tree to be removed, and also trees to be planted. The new tree on the plans here is a Ginkgo Princeton Century. And new trees to be planted is Trystenia, Trysteniaopsis Larina. So I'm going to go through the trees. As urban forestry inspectors, our team will evaluate each tree individually and just assess, very objectively try to assess the condition of that tree. And it should be said that, of course, street trees and significant trees are highly valued in San Francisco, and San Franciscans really value their protection, and that's why we have a robust permit process to discuss anytime there's a potential removal. So this first tree at 1971 Alamania, significant tree, meaning it's on private property, but it meets the significant tree criteria. Technically, it's a quote-unquote volunteer sprout, meaning it wasn't likely planted there on purpose. We don't hold that against it. It's there now, so we evaluate it on its own merits. But that's that particular tree. The next tree we're reviewing is approximately 1985 Alamania. This is tree one, one of three elm trees, Siberian Elms. And what we have here is a situation where PG&E has the easement to have electrical lines, and they have requirements from the PUC to keep vegetation away from those lines for public safety and reliability purposes. So we call this V pruning, meaning the tree has been pruned out into the shape of a V. This repeated pruning has also led to decay forming in some of the main stems. So we have, this is our inspector pointing out the decay pocket using a key to try to bring your attention to where we have decay setting in in the main stems of the tree. One misconception about Siberian Elms and acacias is that because they grow large, they may be assumed to be really old. Sometimes they're not that old. They're just fast growers. But generally, fast-growing species also tend to have poor resistance to decay. This particular tree has had sidewalk repair made multiple times. Again, in and of itself, not a reason to approve a tree, but it's something that we factor into the overall assessment. Another elm tree, tree number two, also receiving this sort of V pruning. It also puts a lot of weight on the branches that remain. And while we try to mitigate that through pruning ourselves, when we go through and prune these trees, over time, the tree can sort of went out, and it creates a really unfortunate structural form that can be prone to fail. Here's the third of the three elms. Again, another pocket of decay in really old pruning cuts and directional pruning cuts from PG&E, which makes these large stems prone to, to fail. A tree number five is much smaller, Trysteniaopsis Larina. This one's healthy. It's established. It's good structure. Planning for building has placed driveway here, so the driveway, this is a driveway conflict. And the note from our inspector is developer unable to move driveway. Tree four was an empty basin. Tree seven is a platinus tree, large stature tree at maturity, growing below the power lines. These are often pollarded, as we do on California streets. Wreck and Park does that in front of City Hall. This one is being essentially pruned every year or two by PG&E to keep it below the power lines. There's a little bit of canopy imbalance and some decline, but not, not terribly so. Tree seven is, is a tree that's in decline. You can see some of the decline in the center of the canopy of the tree. And on Mission Street, the Mission Street frontage, we have a small Victorian box tree, which potentially could be replaced with a similar-sized tree by the project sponsor. Same thing with a second Victorian box tree. Now, the palm trees, I don't know what's been discussed between our inspector and the applicant, but in preparation for the hearing this week, these two palms really jump out at me as, if they're being sought for removal, which they are, these would really be candidates to have transplanted. We have plenty of other missing tree locations in the Mission. And so I'm going to kind of add to the mix and say that I think we need to have a discussion about the transplanting of these two palm trees because that would be a real benefit to the, the community in this immediate neighborhood. Another tree approved for removal is, it's this relatively small tree and can be replaced in kind by the project sponsor. And so there'd be six replacement trees in Alamania, Trystenia, Trysteniaopsis Larina, which is appropriate for planting under high, existing high voltage lines. Five replacement trees on Mission Street, being Ginkgo, Baloba, Princeton Century, which are large stature tree at maturity. And some overall stats here, the project proposes to remove 11 trees, plant 11 trees, but will still owe 13 in-lufy fees. And what that means is, when there's a construction, renovation, or new construction, it triggers a tree planting requirement of one tree per 20 feet of linear frontage to the right-of-way. And our inspector has done the math here, just so we can share that. So 484 linear feet divided by 20-foot spacing equals 24 required trees. 11 would be planted, resulting in a a delta there of 13 in-lufy fees for the trees that cannot fit on the site. And it's a pretty standard practice, unfortunately, for there not to be enough room to plant all the required trees. So it, it becomes a development impact fee in that regard. Sometimes people can't plant trees because of a bus zone or streetlights or any number of other utility conflicts that are outside the property owner's control, yet we still gather those fees as impact fees. So with that, that's a pretty thorough review. My understanding, based on the application for removal, is the applicant has reasons for removal of these trees and would go into greater detail about that. But that concludes the staff presentation at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I think next we have Sarah White, who is the applicant.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and I also have our architect, Ben Schwaaki, and landscape architect Cliff Low here to better explain our, I apologize in retrospect, I was too brief in our rationale for not being why we weren't able to move the driveway, so I want to apologize in advance for that. We should have, you know, in retrospect, prepared a more robust response to that. So my apologies to you all for that. But we do have a presentation on our architect and landscape, excuse me.
There, this is the clerk Clinton. Did you say Clifton, and who was the other person you would like to leave the law to speak?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, Cliff Low.
Yes, I have him, and the next person is?
Ben Schwaaki. S-H-U-A-Q-U-I.
No.
C-H, excuse me, C-H-U-A-Q-U-I. It'll look a bit advanced, V-W-P.
I, I think I'm, yeah.
Okay, thanks, all right. Um, yeah, my name is Sarah White. I'm a director with Bridge Housing, so just want to thank you for your time this evening to consider our tree removal application. Bridge Housing is an affordable developer. We work throughout the state of California developing affordable rental communities. And this project has been in the work for some time. We've owned the site since 2017, and And um, we are proposing to redevelop the site, which currently has uh, now vacant uh, Valenti Funeral Home on the site. Um, and we, our plan is to redevelop uh, the site into a hundred and thirty-seven units of a hundred percent affordable housing. Um, so a community benefit that's desperately needed in our uh, city today and. Um, uh, the project was approved by the planning department in two thousand nineteen. Uh, we have a significant level of funding from the mayor's office of housing and community development to support. The transformation of the site into an affordable housing apartment community. Um, and also the strong support of um, the District Eleven Supervisor Asha Safi. Um, I believe uh, the supervisor has submitted a letter of support, uh, you know, urging. Uh, the approval of our tree removal application. Um, so there's a lot of community benefit going into this site in addition um, to the affordable housing. Um, and the replacement tree plan, um, and Ben and Cliff can speak a bit more to that. Um, I also want to point out um, that uh. In addition to the housing, there's ground floor um, commercial spaces on the Mission. Uh, street elevation and uh, one of the proposed um, uses is a ten thousand square foot community clinic. Um, that'll be operated by Mission Neighborhood Health Center. Um, they are looking for a permanent home to offer, um, you know, much needed services to low income residents throughout the city. They'll be providing. Um, dental care, um, mental health care, in addition to the medical services that they're currently offering out of their. Um, smaller location in in the Excelsior neighborhood. And then finally, there's also really great uh, pedestrian walkway uh, that'll connect uh, Mission uh, and Alamani. Uh, just enhancing the pedestrian experience for those that um, you know, live in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. White. Um, I'm sorry, that is your three minutes time.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, you add the Ben and Clifton, uh, they were going to speak?
Yeah, yeah, we uh, emailed a uh, presentation to you guys. Uh, I don't know if you have received that. Um.
Yes, I did. I did receive your presentation and unfortunately, I'm having uh, technical difficulties and can't pull it up tonight, but it has been. Given over to the hearing officer, so we did receive it.
Okay. Um.
And I also, I I don't know how big the file is. I did, I did say you could email it to me directly and I can put it on the screen.
Um. Okay, let me just.
But uh, if Clifton or someone else would like to open the public.
Well, yeah, um, yeah, this is uh, Clifton Low. I'm the landscape architect on the project and uh. Yeah, actually, Mr. Buck covered most of everything that I was going to bring up, so I don't need to repeat that. In terms of the street trees and and the existing trees that we were going to be removing. However, I think just one correction on Alamania, I think we're planting seven trees. And one keeps on getting missed on the north side, so uh, we'll just make that correction. But overall, I think, you know, we're very sensitive to the global warming situation and everything. And as Sarah was mentioning, there is a very densely landscaped um, sale that connects the mid-block of. Between Mission and Alamani, uh, right behind the Safeway project or Safeway store. And that and also including a central courtyard. We're planting thirty-eight new trees um, total on the project. And 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 this is in addition to the uh, seventh street tree on Alamania and the five on Mission Street.
Okay, I just emailed that. Um, I I just wanted to add, uh. So I'm I'm the project architect on this with Vennetta Williams Pollock. And uh, I've actually been working on this site since uh, twenty fourteen. And we've looked at multiple development scenarios here. Um, and uh, I was going to go through the the logistics uh, of the development very briefly. Um, but this is, this is a a large development with a hundred and thirty-seven affordable housing units, a ten thousand square foot clinic. For about four thousand square feet of retail. And these kinds of facilities just require uh, significant uh, infrastructure improvements. Um, and I wanted to show some of that i- in the slides. Um, but on the, on the Alamania side, I'm just going to talk through them. Um. On the Alamania side, uh, we have multiple uh, vaults, utility boxes. Uh, and and it's not just the box, but the lines that connect to them and weave in and out of the street. Um, and we also have uh, multiple passenger drop-off areas. Um, and I wanted to, as Cliff and Sarah pointed out. Even though we're um, replacing these trees, we're replacing them with. Uh, significant improvements uh, to the, to the uh, streets. With replacing the sidewalks, all the trees and and this public walkway, which will include about. Uh, I don't know, eleven or twelve new trees along the walkway. Um, so, uh, you know, and and this is a, this is a quality landscaping, uh. You know, uh, the 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 that we're replacing with. Um, so in terms of the logistics, if you can just um, kind of, I just wanted to show that the walkway location is sort of. Is fundamental to the design and and it aligns with France Street with which connects to um. McLaren Park. And then the location of the driveway, which was mentioned there, uh, is is allows for a continuous, uh.
I'm. I I love. Can see the screen, if you could guide me to what page you'd like.
Okay, thi- this page is fine here.
Thank you.
Um, it looks a little small, but anyways, um, yeah, so the location. Of the drive, so so the building in general, it it's five stories on on the Mission side and then it steps down to four stories on Alamania. And it has a uh, frontage, a commercial frontage along the uh, Mission side and and more retail, a more residential frontage on the. Alamania side, but the the location of the driveway, just wanted to mention that. Um, oops, uh. It it's, it allows for a continuous uh, row of uh, of entries along Alamania. And that's something that planted, planning has always uh, desired and. So the the uh, presentation kind of disappeared, but um. So. That's uh, the the location of the driveway is 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 really important a- at that area. Um. So we got, on one side, we have the walkway, on the other side, a pedestrian walkway, on the other side, we have the driveway. Um, and just on this section, just wanted to say that there's, maybe stop there, stop there at the section. There there's an eight foot difference, there's an eight foot difference between Mission Street and Alamania. And so that parking garage where the driveway is, is is hidden from view and you know, that access point is. It allows for the the parking being tucked behind the uh, residential units that face Alamania. So maybe go to the next slide. So this slide just shows the the relationship of the street improvements. Uh, relative to the uh, existing trees. And on the top part, we see Alamania, on the bottom part, we see Mission, and you can see all the the number of utility boxes that are. Um. Located on along the sidewalk here with lines connecting to them and then wet utility lines uh, coming into the uh. Building as well. Um, and there are, on on the south side, there's also uh, a. Passenger drop-off area, which also requires uh, you know, a significant curb cut, ADA curb cut. Uh, on on the Alamania side and on the Mission side, same thing with the utility lines and passenger drop-off areas for the clinic. And and the residential that require these these large uh, curb cuts.
Okay, excuse me, um, that is uh, the time. Uh, Mr. Hearing Officer, did you want him to proceed or to?
Um, no, let's uh, let's move on to a public comment. Thank you for that. Uh, I see Josh's hands raised.
Thank you. Um, I I wanna, I wanted to say, yeah, uh, it's eighty inches of vertical clearance. I went and pulled my code book and looked that up and. Want to make sure I throw that on the record. So, uh, while we're talking about the law, there's, there's nothing in Article sixteen that allows for tree removal based on what type of project it is. The law applies equally to the development of affordable housing as it would to building a strip mall. And it's um, wow, super discouraging to see photo after photo of all of these trees with all of these problems. And then we get to the one healthy tree. And we're taking that out because we can't move a driveway. So now we're up to five trees tonight coming up for driveways and uh. At this rate, we're going to have a lot of driveways, functioning streetlights and upgraded lights posts and fewer and fewer established trees. When we need them more than ever. And I question what it says to the public who needs these resources. Literally needs them, that planning approves this and doesn't consider the existing trees on site. And as a matter of fact. Based on the original rendering of this project from February two thousand nineteen, at least what's available on the, on the uh. SF Assessor website, preservation of existing trees was not a consideration by anyone, uh, even from the outset. So we've got another healthy tree here going out because of another driveway. And what's also perplexing about that is what appears to be a ton of of what's going to be. Open frontage, especially since we're taking down all of the other trees. And yet, with all of this empty frontage, this open frontage. We've got to run the driveway through the, through the one big healthy tree. I did see that there was um, a small tree that looks like it was recently planted. It was still staked up. Um, I would like to know if there's been any consideration for replanting that, so it's not a resource that just goes to waste. I'm I'm sure that there was a lot of effort and perhaps ta- taxpayer dollars that went into that. So I'd like to know if that could be preserved. And finally, um, those are a lot of really big trees. I don't know if there has been any consideration of wood reuse. But wood reuse is part of the two thousand and fourteen San Francisco Urban Forest Plan. And I would like to know if that has been, uh, if there's been any consideration of that. Thank you.
Uh, Chris, uh, would you be able to answer those two questions if uh, we can reuse some of the tree, uh, reuse? Uh, small, keep the small tree and uh, maybe recycle some of the um, wood.
Sure, um, Chris with Public Works Bureau of Urban Forestry. So yeah, those are good questions, uh, on the the young tree. Keeping it or not, that's definitely a part of the discussion this evening. Um, that's kind of what we're, what we're submitting for consideration. And then in terms of wood reuse, um. You know, we are. We're in the process of getting a wood reuse program in place so that we can actually do that. Um, we are actively pursuing that. It's something, of course, we need to, you need to look at what the potential for that wood reuse would be, meaning. How much of the wood is is there that's sound wood? Um, obviously not all, all the trees here, all sections of that wood would be candidates. Um, that is something that we can. That I would say to the, as the hearing officer and the director reviews this application, that be considered. Um, as part of a final recommendation would be a. Noting that in the findings and responding to that inquiry along with the the young tree. So I think those are things that should be addressed in the recommendation. Thank you.
Chris, um, are there any other public comments? I don't see any hands up. So I'm going to close this item, move on to the next. Order number two zero three seven zero seven at sixty-five Ocean. Uh, Chris, do you have a presentation for this?
Yes, um, good evening, so. Let's move on to the next one. Um, and there's a bit of a sideshow taking place, so hopefully that's not coming across on uh, audio, but. Um. So, yes, so this is a application to consider the removal. Of twelve street trees and two significant trees. This is order two zero three seven zero seven. This is adjacent to sixty-five Ocean Avenue, and this is a case that um, there was a caller, uh, Mr. Lance Carnes. He brought this to our attention the other day that um, in preparation, his own preparation for the hearing, he he noted that. The checklist, the tree protection checklist was uh, not updated by the applicant. And we were just at Board of Appeals, um, arguing a case at Joy Street about. Uh, procedure and the importance of procedure. Uh, sometimes we have an applicant who submits a removal application. They don't yet know which of these trees we will consider to be street trees within the right of way or significant trees. There can be some really gray areas. This is a definitely a case of that. So my colleague who reviewed this application did a great job updating and confirming the removals. Um, getting updated plans for planting and replacements. Including a revised uh, removal application, but not the checklist. And we were just really in a heated discussion about the importance of having the checklist. Match what's proposed removal prior to really not just the hearing, but even posting trees for hearing. So with all that being said, we reached out to the applicant and said that we really need to ru- uh, reschedule this one. Because we, we really need to be above reproach when it comes to our process and we want to make sure that we. Can maintain the the public trust. And so the concern is that. There's a p- potential for the perception that we're moving forward on an application that's quote-unquote incomplete. So we, we've asked the applicant, we haven't asked them, we inform them that we're continuing this to the next available tree hearing. And we'll make sure that we have the matching checklist uh, prior to doing that. So what I'm asking you as the hearing officer to do is see if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to speak about this because it's on the agenda. But otherwise, I would ask that we not do the presentation and just hear this on our next available hearing. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, I'm in agreement uh, with continuing this or rescheduling this to a later date. Um, so at this time, I'd probably like to open it up to some public comments, uh, whatever public comment that's. Um, presented here will be presented to the uh, next hearing officer. For their consideration if you are not able to make it to the next hearing. So at that, um, are there anyone that would like to comment on this item at this time?
I don't see.
Yeah, I don't see any hands, so um, I will close this. Actually, John, John has his hands up.
Hi, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Um, John Kevlin, on behalf of the project sponsor, um, uh, agree with Mr. Buck that uh, this should be continued. We don't want um, procedural item uh, holding us up at the Board of Appeals down the road, so we're in agreement. We would ask though, you know, this, this is a project where uh, we've got permits being issued in the near future. I I think it's important that we we move this forward expeditiously, so I would make the request uh, of the hearing officer, Mr. Buck, that we. Schedule this uh, for the next hearing, I believe it would be uh, about two weeks from now. I think you guys are holding these uh, twice a month, so. I would appreciate your consideration for that request and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So I will close this item and move on to the next. Uh, order number two zero three seven zero eight. Uh, the twelve different addresses and supervisor district two. Uh, Chris, will you please make your presentation?
Uh, thank you. This is Chris Buck with the Bureau of Urban Forestry. And moving on to our final item for this evening, so I want to thank everyone for their uh, patience and we'll begin this from the. Current slide. So I have a similar disclaimer to make. We um. You know, our team really prides itself in attention to detail, but in back-to-back cases, we we found we had um, some errors, so. The goal with this case is, I'll explain, is we had a number of trees that were either dead or nearly dead, that are definitely considered hazards. Where we posted the tree for fifteen day notices. And the goal here was to include those in a grouping where we could easily show the public photos of the compelling need to remove those. And we wanted to limit it by district, and so we, it was brought to our attention by Mr. Carnes. Earlier in the week, that three of these twelve trees are technically not in District Two, they're in District Five. And I'll, you know, I can confirm for everyone whi- which uh, trees those are. And move forward on the the PowerPoint. So. The items that I'm going to also ask you for us to to move to the next available hearing. Is twenty-four forty-five Pine, nineteen ninety-one Bush and nineteen oh-two. is 2445 Pine, 1991 Bush and 1902 Bush. Because those were not in District Two. And so it's, you know, potentially misleading to, to say that these are 12 addresses in District Two. And if you're in District Five, well, then you wouldn't have your, your radar up. So I just want to really solidify this in everyone's mind. These are the three trees on this slide that we're not considering this evening. We'll consider the rest with one further note. And so again, 1902 Bush Street, this will be moved to the next hearing. We haven't scheduled the next hearing yet, but it's likely to be in early to mid November. The next one will continue as 1991 Bush Street, also District Five. And the last one is 2445 Pine Street, also District Five, not District Two. One final correction is that we also discovered through Mr. Carnes that we just, we posted a 30 day removal notice on the subject tree at 1122 Broderick. So this item is also being moved to next hearing so that we aren't in any way perceived as misleading the public. Those are true human user error and we apologize for that. So with that, we do have the eight of the 12 trees, which we respectfully submit to public review. That we need to remove these trees. And I'm going to move through those really quickly. So 2700 Pierce. This is a ficus tree, so this should be evergreen. And this one is, is dead and it's not coming back. So we posted with a 15 day notice. Victorian Box Tree, adjacent 2536 Greenwich, this one's dead, no chance of it coming back. And we need to remove and replace it. This is a blackwood acacia and those leaves are totally dead. They should be deep, deep green. Again, acacia melanoxlan should look green and vigorous and healthy at all times. Unfortunately, just to share it, it's, I see a lot of sidewalk repair, which is pretty typical for the species. It does not tolerate a lot of sidewalk, tree root sidewalk impacts. So extensive sidewalk repair, not surprised to see that this, this tree has died. This is a plum tree, not dead, but really, really riddled with decay. And there's different formulas for determining how much strength loss occurs when wood is degraded through decay. But any wood that has decay has zero strength holding capacity. So a tree can, you know, sometimes have as much as only 30% remaining sound wood still hold itself up. But when you also break that ring, that circular ring and have a break in that with the, the cavity breaking through the circumference of the stem, that further decreases the strength holding capacity. So this, although this one is not dead, it's a doornail. It is full of decay, so it's a hazard in that it could potentially fail. So this was also a 15 day notice. Also, at 2362 Vallejo is another tree with large crack in it. And that's the one we were looking at on the right. And another view of the tree on the left with the decay conch. Another one is 23 Orban Place, it's a cherry tree. This one's dead and looks like it may have died from fireplace. And wrapping up, we have a Brazilian pepper tree. Again, great tree above ground, but it does, causes a lot of sidewalk damage. And you can see there's an entire new sidewalk out there. Sidewalk has been repaired repeatedly. And this time around, the tree did not tolerate that and has died through no negligence of the city and/or the property owner. And wrapping it up, 1885 Vallejo Street, this is a, a dead magnolia tree. It should have green large leaves year round. And one more ficus at 2165 Jackson Street, the tree is, is died. And then on all these screens, we have the details of which will be replaced and which won't be replaced as well. So those are the eight trees of the 12. We want to apologize for that, those errors in that posting. But we also wish to move forward with eight of the 12 that were correctly identified as being 15 day notices within District Two. We're going to continue the other items so that we can remain above reproach in our process. So to be consider, consistent with how we've handled similar cases, those were 15 day removal notices. And just reiterating for anyone in the public that to get on our mailing list for any of these items, to email urban forestry@sfdpw.org. But that wraps up this presentation item.
Thank you, Chris. So we have a group of, a bunch of items here. I'm going to open up to public comment. I think you all are going to have your hands up for this one. When you speak, please indicate which trees you're speaking about. Thank you. See Josh's hands raised.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm curious about this process for removing trees by district. I've not seen that before. I'm not aware of the, how that is, I guess, consistent with Article 16's procedural requirements. I'm not saying it is or it isn't, I've just never seen it before. And so I guess I would be curious to hear from the department how that falls within the procedural mandates of Article 16. Specific to Article 16 also, Article 16, Section 806A4 governs the process for removing hazard trees. And hazard tree is defined in Article 16, Section 802. Within that definition, it's required that the director make a determination in writing that the tree meets the definition of a hazard tree. And so I would be curious to know if that written determination has been made with respect to each one of these trees. Thank you.
Chris, did you get that down? Do you want to respond or do you want?
Are you going to comment on that real quick?
Yeah, so I think that's, those are great questions and we can address those here and in the resulting decision. So we will verify the, this, the right of the director's determination in writing. We'll respond to that in the resulting decision. And then procedurally, you know, what we're trying to do here is we, obviously due to COVID, we, like many agencies, had to take a break from hosting any hearings. And so we have some liability here with, with trees that we've deemed hazards that were protested. Now, some of these protests, just as a matter of public record, some of them are by an individual who doesn't attend the hearings. So our belief is that when we have a handful of cases that are kind of located within one area and we feel like we can show photos and, and show that it's a compelling reason for removal, that we do combine these in a single agenda item. Because otherwise, we'd literally be having so many hearings. So these are also trees that are not related to any private development or applicants. So these are all street tree SF related removals that are, we've found to be in need of, of removal. So we do want to lay some fears there. It's not a, a move to do anything here other than try to manage street trees that are in really poor and hazardous condition. So procedurally, we did check just to verify, like, look, can we, is there any reason we couldn't do this through our vice attorney? So we have looked into that. And then it's best for me to confirm the other question about the director's determination. I don't want to misspeak, but we will absolutely address that in the, the resulting decision. That's a great question. And I think I'm gonna wait to answer it in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker, Monica.
Hi, yes, I spoke earlier and misspoke about another agenda item. But wanted to reinstate my concerns around the hazardous tree at 1885 Vallejo Street. It has been a dead tree for quite some time now. I am a property owner of 1883 Vallejo Street. So I, my property is facing right in the front of this dead tree. My main concerns are for safety reasons because Vallejo Street is a high traffic area where we do get a lot of families, pets, animals walking around in this neighborhood. So I'm deeply concerned about the safety and just the protection of my neighbors for this dead tree. That is all.
Thank you, Monica. Lance?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah. So I just like to second what Josh said. And as well, it turns out that the, some of these trees have been on a 15 day hazard removal status since February of this year. So that's roughly eight plus months away. I, my, my impression is if you, if you say it's a hazard and it's 15 day notice, you take care of it pretty soon. So I'd like Mr. Buck to comment on why some of these trees have been sitting, sitting around for probably five to eight months. Thank you.
Chris, would you be able to speak to that briefly?
Sure. So the city is in a state of emergency and has been since, I think, mid-March. And unlike other departments, our bureau is not, didn't fire up a its tree removal hearing machine. One, just out of, you know, our clerk was assigned to the coroner's office to support there. And we had urban forestry inspectors assigned to monitor hotels. So we've been impacted, just like many other city agencies, in responding to being first responders to COVID-19. But as Mr. Carnes knows, these trees were protested. So some of these trees are not the largest trees in the world. So what we've had to do internally is look at our backlog and also look at which of these trees do we think we could keep in their current state and schedule for hearings at a later date. So it is concerning and I, I definitely want to thank you for emphasizing that the liability the ci- the city experiences. But it does demonstrate the extent to which the city will extend itself in the tree, in our very robust tree removal permit process to make sure that every day, every tree gets its, its day in a hearing, so to speak. But absolutely, it's, it's a concern and we need to monitor that. And we also make decisions about which, which trees to move forward. So we've moved a number of other trees that are much larger forward for removal through the hearing process in the last couple of months. Some of these are a little bit smaller. And so the severity of that public safety concern, again, it's one of degrees. But that's, that's what we use to make those decisions.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any other person that would like to speak on this item? Okay, if not, I'm going to close this item. And there are no more items for tonight's hearing. I will now close this hearing. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Have a great night.